Of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present this evening. And first order of business is visitor comments. Are there any visitors who would like to make a comment tonight? Can come to the microphone? Have none? Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. In that, we have approval of minutes for July 20th of 2020, our regular board meeting. We have the treasures report for July of 2020. Mr. Dernall, the claims?
Mr. President, I'd recommend approval of gross wages from July 3, 2020, for $483,621.26. Gross wages from many payroll on July 6 for $941.60. Gross wages on July 17, 2020, for $471,991.87. Gross wages on 7/31/2020 for $81,481.41. Preclaims, prepays, from July 1 till July 31, $4,270,386.65. Regular vouchers on 8/17, $291,934.93. Forest Hills claims, 8/18/2020, $970.81, for a grand total of $6,953.53. I'd recommend approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. For the donations, we have $500 from Superior Driving School for the student athlete in the 12 sport program. We have $250 from Chandler Funeral Home for the student athlete in the 12 sport program. We have $300 from Demarius Lee for the Lunch Angel and for Meals for Shields. We have $368.74 from Donors Choose to Mrs. Rhodes Class for COVID-19 purposes. We have $281.39 from Donors Choose to Mrs. Rhodes Class for Representing with Books. $465.11 from Donors Choose to Mrs. Truax's class for six wobble chairs. $532 from Donors Choose to Mrs. Coralet's class for classroom supplies. And $424.89 from Donors Choose to Mrs. Robbins class for classroom supplies. Thank you very much to Donors Choose. $10,000 from the RBBCSC Foundation for e-learning digital tools. And $515 from the class of 1968 for a bench in front of EHS. Dr. Sanders, would you like to add some things?
Yes, I just would like to specifically appreciate all the donors, but want to give a big shout out to the RBBCSC Foundation. Jamie Miller was talking to me about some digital tools that the teachers really needed in order to do the e-learning and the virtual school. And I said, well, we have some really nice people on the RBBCSC Foundation. Let's see what they could do. I had no idea that they would be willing to donate $10,000 to help us out and just made my day. So I just want to give a big shout out to them. And we asked a couple of nice guys here tonight from the class of 1968. The class of 1968 is donating a bench that will sit out in front of the high school. And so we have Mick Harmon and Randy Stevenson here tonight in the front row. So I want to give a big shout out to them.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
You know, you're a little older than I am, but thank you.
Didn't recognize you with a mask, Mick.
Continuing the consent agenda, we have personnel resignations, retirements, non-annials, leaves, and terminations, 1 through 13, with 13 being that Mr. Steve Porter is retiring from the high school as a science teacher. And personnel appointments and transfers, 1 through 54, with number 54 being Rochelle Price being appointed to EECC Lead Instructional Assistant. Consent agenda, we have a motion?
I move approval. I'll second.
Moving second. Any questions or comments or further discussion on the consent agenda items?
Real quick, Dana, was that Ms. Price, was she a highly qualified instructional assistant? Is that correct or not?
It's just EECC Lead Instructional Assistant.
Couldn't remember how we did that. It was taped at the last meeting. I couldn't remember.
No, she's a lead.
Lead, okay, lead.
She's a preschool lead IA.
Lead IA, okay.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on the consent agenda. Now we have the business manager's report. Mr. Irwin?
Can you guys hear me all right? That wasn't me, I swear. You guys hear me good? Yeah? All right, cool. So you guys have the cash flows there in front of you. We'll start in the education fund as we typically do. I did update projections to show the fiscal year '21 revenue that would be coming in through the new funding formula. So I projected that out through what things look like currently of when they do reconciliation back in November, December. So we are pleased with where we stand on that. Obviously, there's some things that have come out recently with the changing of the ADM count date, that they've moved back from September 18. So that's moved back. And so we're staying in close contact with all the guidance that's been coming out with that as far as when they'll set a date in stone for that. They've talked about it being, the new count date being in early December. It could possibly be in late December. They have not solidified a date for that. So we will continue to monitor that and what that means for us. But right now, the projections show, they show that that set is what the normal, the normal schedule would be, is that they set that ADM with your September count. And then they do reconcile whether it's up or down in November, December, and show that's what I've shown you there on those projections with the education fund. But again, we're in great shape with where we are. It's kind of in these uncertain times. And glad we're in this shape with the uncertain times with where they are with funding and that sort of thing right now with those questions. Moving over to debt service, I'll give you guys a chance to turn to that one. July payments were all made. The federal subsidies that are on the 2010 loans did not come in in time. So we didn't make those gross payments on those two loans. We did have, we're going to have to do an additional appropriation because of that. So we'll come back next month and do an additional appropriation in debt service. We stayed in close contact with our loan trustee from Old National about when they plan to get to those from the federal government. And they've had communication that those have started to come in, and that the reason those did not come in on time was that they did not have, federal government didn't have employees in the building to process those on time. So when we receive those, we'll update you on that. But next month, we'll need to do an additional appropriation in debt service, which we have the cash to do. So we'll do that next month. Operations Fund has stayed right about where we want it to be. We did get that bump here in July where we did receive in safety grant dollars for our SROs. So year end, we are in good shape. But again, right now, as we continue to navigate some of the extra precautions we're taking with COVID, that does, that is going to cause us to expend more money to make sure that we're providing a safe environment continually for our students. So there could be some flux with how that moves about over the next couple of months. All in all, though, we're in good shape. Again, obviously, we're in some uncertain times with everything going on. But we feel, you know, pretty good about where we are right now, that we have the ability to navigate that and make the moves that we need to make. So I'll take questions at this time.
Just want to appreciate all the hard work that you guys have been putting in over the last several years to increase the financial health of the educational fund. And to be in the position we are is, you know, is great credit to you guys. And a good thing we're there with uncertain times. So very, very good job to all of you. While you're up there, Mr. Irwin, our next item on the agenda is permission to advertise the 2021 budget.
Yeah, so the, right now, the, based on the budget calendar, we have set the first date of publication to the 2021 budget would be by August 27, 2020. It'll be published to Gateway. The bus replacement and capital project plans will also be posted to Gateway. And we'll take those same things, the Form 3 and those two documents, and post them to our website as we are required to. With some of the information that I gave you, I did provide you a small chart there to show you some comparison from where we were on the budget estimates from 2020 to where those budget estimates came in in 2021, and just gave you some key factors as to what helps us navigate through some of those changes. You know, I mentioned before that fiscal year '21 funding formula, which helps us put together new projections for the budget moving forward in 2021. And then in operations, that's a levy-driven fund. The max, the max levy growth quotient was 4.2% this year. So that was the rise in the difference of our maximum growth levy for the operations fund. So we made those adjustments as we continue to move that. And then with debt service, those taking into account all of our current debt payments and the schedules that we need to make. We have worked pretty closely, and we continue to work closely with our underwriters and Stiefel, who help give us good guidance as far as the debt service, as far as making sure that we continue to monitor our tax rate and keep that goal of hitting that total tax rate of $1.10, and managing that moving forward to make sure that we stay at or below it. So that from year to year, we have consistent management of that, and so they know what that goal is. We re-express that through this budget process to make sure that we stay on track with that. So we appreciate the help that they've been. They've been really, really well, you know, really good at this whole process through the communications that they've given to help us make sure we stay on track there. Look back at a couple of my notes just to make sure I didn't miss anything. Like I said, I also want to express some gratitude to Paul so far through this process. As you know, Paul has a great, great deal of knowledge. So with that, I ask your permission to advertise the 2021 budget.
I'll second.
Moving second. Any questions or comments on them? Hear none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Irwin.
Mr. President, I, I'm not sure, but I think we might have two who might want to, who missed the public speaking time. I didn't know if you want to give them a chance to...
I did get something that came in late from Ron. We'd had a couple people that did show up that said that they did want to have public comment.
Oh, okay, sure.
We thought it was over. We were standing by the door over by the pool.
That's okay. Oh, that's okay. Yeah, so visitors, we'll reopen the visitors' comment period. If you have, would like to address the board, please come up to the microphone. There'll be a X where to stand so that it's a directional microphone, and Mr. Irwin can help you with that. So be sure to press your, tell us your name and what you would like, let us know.
Hi, I'm Mary Blessinger, and I tried to write this down, so hopefully this comes off okay. So basically, I just wanted to make, just make a comment, I guess, that I'm hoping that you guys are, when, that the school isn't going to spend too much time on focusing on the county numbers, that our, you know, our demographics are much more closely aligned with neighboring counties like Owen County, which would be a more accurate reflection of our population. Like when it comes to the COVID numbers, how we were looking at the Monroe County Health numbers, which I understand, we're, we are in Monroe County, but with our, with where we're at in our demographics and our schooling, they kind of align with other areas, schools more in line with us and our demographics. So when all those numbers come out, if there is a spike, or I don't know whether there will be or not, then I'm hoping that, you know, we can look at that whole picture versus just the numbers that come out from Monroe County Health when it comes back to reopening things. So, does that make sense?
Thank you.
That was it?
Thank you. Anybody else?
So my name is Marcy Edwards. I have three children, one in high school, one at the junior high, and one at EPS. At the very beginning of this, when we got the email saying that we were going from the five-day in-person learning to the two-day and three-virtual, I sent an email with my concerns, explaining to you each that why it was so important for each of my three kids to be in person five days a week. I'm here tonight because I got, I did get a response. It seemed pretty general. I know some acquaintances that got a very similar response, read a lot of the same lines in it. So I'm here for you to see my face and hear me, that I am pushing for you to reconsider the five-day in-person learning. So every, every year, I take my kids to a well-child visit to the pediatrician. And one of the questions, along with, do you have working smoke alarms in your house? Do they wear a seatbelt when they're riding the car? Is how much screen time are they getting? And they are recommending that they only get one hour a day of high-quality screen time. And here we are, we're going to school two days a week, and the other three days, we're subjecting our children to sitting in front of a screen, which has never been recommended by the Pediatrician Association. And I just don't agree with it. I think that we need to think outside the box, maybe come up, I know just today, my junior high student, he had gym class. I'm trying to understand why he didn't go outside. He played kickball inside, wearing a mask, inside the gym. It, stuff like that just doesn't make sense to me. I think that there's things that we can do to think outside the box so that we can get these kids back to learning how they're supposed to learn. That's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I believe that was it.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is consideration to approve the contract with Building Associates, Inc., regarding the addition to the primary school. And there has been a small revision on there to reflect Monroe County in that. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so last month, the board was asked to award the bid for the addition to the primary school, which is the preschool connector. And so tonight, you are approving the contract with Building Associates with, and it was reviewed by Ferguson Law. And quite, quite here, Dana, but there was one at Exhibit C, there was a change, had the wrong county. So we corrected that. And so that's the only change. George Link may be on the line. We might be having technical difficulties. George, can you hear us? Okay. He says we're, we've muted him. I think he could hear us, but I don't think he could speak.
Now, can you hear me now, Jerry?
Yes, we can. Yep.
Okay, yeah, you just, I just became unmuted.
Okay. So if you have any, George, you want to add anything about the contract with Building Associates?
Are you there? Hello?
We're here, George. Can you hear us?
Now, now I can hear you. Now I can hear you.
Okay. We're just talking about the addition to the primary school. Is there anything you'd like to add?
The contracts that are before you are pretty much standard contracts we use on all of our construction projects, same contract that you used in previous projects. As Jerry said, Ferguson Law, they have reviewed them. There was one reference to the wrong county, and we've corrected that. So they have reviewed it, and we've made the change that they requested.
Anything further?
So I recommend approval of the contract.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Moving second. Any questions or comments?
I just wonder when it's going to start.
Well, we've already had our pre-construction meeting with Building Associates, and they are getting ready yet this week, I think, to begin to mobilize the site. So it'll, it's getting ready to start. And I think it's Wednesday. We picked Wednesday for their day to bring in their equipment and get the site ready, because that would be all e-learning day. So that would be a good day for them to get started.
George still on the phone?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
What else? How the junior high uptake project?
Uh, yeah, we could do that.
Tell me if on the phone.
Uh, you want to take care of this first and then do the updates?
We'll do the vote first, yeah.
Yeah, let's do these two, and then we'll ask for updates on the other projects. All right. Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Now we have the consideration to approve the contract with Commercial Services regarding the HVAC upgrade. Again, there was a change to Exhibit C for, to reflect Monroe County. Dr. Sanders?
Pretty much the same thing. This is a project to improve the HVAC systems in the corporation. When we first even started talking about some of the needs that we have, that we could utilize our bond funds for, we wanted to make sure that we addressed some of the basics. And one of those basics is just making sure that our HVAC system is quality and does a good job. And so last month, you awarded that bid to Commercial Services. And so tonight, we're asking you to approve that, that contract. George, you have anything to say about the HVAC?
No, but pretty much what we're awarding tonight is what we found out back in 2018 with John's Control, looking at that. There's more work that needs to be done, but this fits within the budget of what we budgeted back in 18 for the work that has been completed. So it will address all that. And then at some point in time, once we get nearer to the completion of the project, we'll be submitting for rebate on that, and we'll report back to the board at that time what kind of rebate money we were able to get back on these projects.
So I recommend your approval of the contract with Commercial Services.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Moving second. And just for those who may not know, HVAC stands for Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning. So it's our infrastructure to our buildings, basically. Any questions or comments? Hear none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
George, you want to take a second to give an update on the junior high project while you're here?
Uh, yeah, sure can. Sure can. The junior high project is moving well, moving on quite well. They should be. I'll find out for sure tomorrow. The, within the next two weeks, have the stone up and the roof on the building. So they'll be starting to move more towards inside of the building. We're anticipating the multipurpose room and the steam labs to be turned over right after Christmas break. And then the Family Science Room, or the old home ec room, and the cafeteria, those, that part of the project will occur next summer on that. So it's moving along well. Really haven't had any issues. It's, you know, quite honestly, the masons have really surprised me at how quickly they've moved on the project. So it's nice to know that that project could be usable by the first of the year for the multipurpose rooms and steam rooms. And then the new administration building and the bus maintenance area, that should be off the bid, I gotta think, in two weeks from Monday on it. We're trying to stagger it out with that and the swimming pool project to be out to bid.
So we have...
Do you have any questions?
We have construction progress meetings every other week. Any of the board members, if you'd like to attend one of those, just let me know. If you want to take a tour of the junior high project, it's, we're really working, I think, with a quality company. They are, you can tell the workmanship is good. They're making good progress. They're easy to work with. They're very accommodating for the school staff. So we just can't wait to get it finished and see some show choir presentations in there.
Our next meeting is a week from tomorrow, and then on, and really, anytime that anybody wants to, I'm up there every Tuesday, starting about 8:30 in the morning on Tuesdays until whatever business we have that day is done.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Link. Any further questions?
I have a question. Are the students going to have access to that? Is there actual classroom in there?
When it's finished, you have the multipurpose room, which will be set up where we can do show choirs, but it also can transform into a practice court. And then there are two rooms that are adjacent to that multipurpose room that will be the Makerspace Labs, the steam labs for the junior high. And so last year, when we were visiting a lot of schools from Wisconsin to Tennessee, we saw some pretty innovative Makerspace Labs. And so I'm kind of picturing those labs in that space. So it gets me pretty excited.
And how long before they'll use that?
Uh, they'll, we'll use it yet this year.
Yep. Hopefully, right after the Christmas break.
Yeah, great thing about the multipurpose room, especially during these times, is it's a large space where you could gather students and have social distancing. So that'll be nice when that large space is available. Nothing further? We'll move on. Our next item on the agenda, again, thank you, Mr. Link, next item on the agenda...
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Is the, to approve the Community Foundation Grant Agreement. Dr. Sanders?
So every once in a while, you pick up the new, the phone, and you get some really good news. And I did that last week. Tina Peterson called. She's the president and CEO of the Community Foundation of Bloomington in Monroe County. And she asked if we had any COVID-related needs as we started the new school year. And I spoke to her about the fact that we are doing e-learning and virtual schools, and that we, we were aware that we had families who, just at-risk families who needed devices and hotspots. And so I proposed that we, that we would need 50 Chromebooks and 50 hotspots, and that amounted to $17,000. And I wrote up a proposal Friday, and then she called, well, this is a week ago, and she called and said that, that we, we were approved for that. Now, the, since then, the price of a Chromebook has gone up a little bit, so we probably won't be able to get quite 50. But we'll use every dollar of the Community Foundation funds for Chromebooks and hotspots to give to our families. Now, it's six to eight weeks out for a delivery of a Chromebook. So we don't want to wait that long. So we are using some of our devices that we have extra, and some devices that we use for in-school, and that we're going to give out as loners to these families until these Chromebooks come in.
Do we have a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Second. Any questions, comments? The Community Foundation has been a real blessing to the, to the school system through the years. We really appreciate them. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Our next two items we'll take together, consideration to approve Dalton Child Split Position Agreement and the Professional Services Agreement related to that. So, Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so last year, we were welcoming our mental health team that we had put together. And one organization in that mental health team was Dalton Child. And so a year ago, we entered into a contract, an agreement with, with that organization. And they provide a school-based... And, uh, they provide, uh, uh, school-based specialists and also therapists for our schools. And, uh, we were, we were just, uh, starting to really make great strides last year, uh, with getting those people in place. When COVID hit, we had to close, uh, but they've been working with us, uh, under the, the leadership of Jennifer Anderson and Tom Norris during this whole time that, that we have been closed. And, uh, so this is just asking for renewal of those two agreements. The one that covers, uh, the specialists and the therapists, uh, grades, uh, eight down. And then the other one is a memorandum of understanding for the high school position, which is a split position. And then that enables us, uh, to use fifty, fifty percent of that position for whatever we, we would like, whatever we think our greatest need is. And that's to help, uh, some of our at-risk students to, to make sure that we're addressing their mental health issues, but also to help them with, uh, graduation and, and thinking about careers and helping them to be successful. So I recommend approval of both of those agreements.
I move approval. I'll second.
Questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Our next item is consideration to approve the updated high school fees for in-person learning. Uh, Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so we, uh, made two changes to the charges for the EHS in-person, uh, students. Uh, both are, are deal with Apex, which is the curriculum that, uh, some of our students use to attain credits and also our virtual students are using as well. Uh, we had to change the charge on that. This year we ordered more licenses and then what we have in pass, so that changes what it is at those costs. And we needed those to be consistent with what we were doing across the board. Um, so it was necessary to go back and make adjustments to those fees to show that consistency across the board. We didn't make the order on the Apex fees until after the fact as we're doing the virtual school. So it made sense to come back and make sure that we give that same pricing to the in-person students so that they're not being, um, charged differently than what the virtual student would be for the same program. Um, so we went back and made those two changes.
Have a motion?
I'll sec- I'll second.
You'd second it? Any questions on the fees? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Our next item, uh, Mr. Irwin, is the consideration to approve latchkey rates during the hybrid schedule.
Yeah, so again, this is just something as we continue to make changes and work in this ever-changing environment, it causes us to have to make changes to the way that we structure some of the things that we do. So with our latchkey program, we had to adjust the rates that we charge families based on the availability and the time that that program is serving their students. So because students would only be attending two days a week, that's 40% of the week, we reduced those charges down to 40% of the original cost to match what it is, the services that we are providing them. We also made adjustments to the August rates as well to, to reflect the amount of time that they are actually spend using the latchkey program in August. And so they are not charged that full amount even then for August because they'd only be using half of that. So we made sure to go back and adjust those rates to reflect a fair and accurate picture of the services that we're providing those families.
I'll second.
You second it? Any questions, comments? Thanks for staying on top of things and adjusting accordingly to what we need.
Definitely as a whole.
There's a lot of little things that-
Right.
That domino effect here. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Uh, next item is consideration to approve advertisement for teacher laptop computers. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so our Director of Technology, Rick Rauten, has created this, uh, uh, a request for a proposal, a RFP, to advertise for bids to purchase, uh, laptop computers for the RBB teachers. Uh, this request is to replace the current staff laptops, which, uh, have, some of them haven't been replaced for seven years. And they're long overdue, uh, to be able to, uh, provide our teachers with, uh, the devices they need. Of course, with, uh, our current situation, uh, with our teachers having to, uh, and I'll talk more about this later, having to teach students in front of them at the same time, being able to provide, uh, materials and communicate with, uh, parents and teachers at home. Uh, they need the devices to do the job. And, uh, so there's no better time than right now to be able to, uh, make this purchase. And there's a great need. We'll be able to use our GeoBond dollars to, to purchase these laptops. And Rick is here tonight, so, uh, I'd like to let Rick say a few words and answer any questions you might have.
Evening, everybody. Uh, so yeah, as Dr. Sanders mentioned, uh, the laptops we have for the teachers in the classrooms and using, um, they're very old. Uh, we have had some that have reached 12 years. We have some that are seven. We have a few that may be, uh, in-between that were donated from some organizations in the past, but they've all had their life expectancy beyond. Uh, we have maintained them the best we can. There's some for the poor teachers that don't have cameras on them, so they can't do the Zoom with their students in classes, uh, either during the spring or currently now when they're trying to do some of the Zoom functions. So the new laptops that we're looking at definitely have the built-in cameras, the built-in microphones, something that they will need and use every day in their class to, uh, educate our young students. So it's very vital that we get these devices for them and get them up to the 21st century so they can do their job more efficiently. And any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Rick, I have a couple quick questions. Last year about this time, we were doing, uh, computers for the students, correct? Right when you start, right when you started?
No, they, I started in November.
Okay, so that was right before that?
Yeah, right.
And then, and then once they all came in, it was a quite process to get them up and running, correct? Okay, so, once these all come in, I'm sure there's a delay getting them in?
Yes, there is a delay getting them in. We're looking at six to eight weeks before we'll see any shipments because of the, the demand on the products.
Okay. And once they come in, is it a lengthy process getting them up and rolling with all the software?
It will. Uh, if they have to go and be inventoried, they have to go through our, um, imaging process. So we're hoping that we would have them to the teachers, if everything is in the perfect world, when they come back from Christmas break. That's if everything works perfect.
Okay. So we, we'd vote the next meeting?
What's that?
He'd have the bids by the next meeting then we'd vote?
Yeah.
Will, will we, by the time we get the advertisements done? It's not until-
That's what I didn't know.
Two, two advertisements?
Will we-
It'll be the, it'll be the October meeting before you're approving the bids.
October meeting?
October.
Okay.
Current timeline is, uh, September 30th for the proposed, for the bids to be submitted.
Okay.
So that's what I was thinking time-wise, about doing it all fly for the second semester, it's gonna be pretty tight, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay.
And just one other, um, point, the proposal that you have in your packet, it has been reviewed by us, it's been modified a little bit, um, mostly just to change the verbiage from proposal to bid.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move for proof of approval.
I second.
Further questions or comments?
Oh, but I'm gonna be thinking about those teachers.
I know.
It's hard to do a transfer on that. You know, the year we're doing something new, hopefully they'll be able to have a smooth transition with that.
We'll make it as smooth as we can.
Right.
They'll be glad to have him, I'm sure.
Good job.
Oh, I'm sure.
They'll be knocking on the door, probably pounding the door down.
Yeah.
Okay. Job security, Rick?
Hope so.
Alright. Thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Our related item is consideration to approve mobile hotspot agreement. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so we are, uh, providing, uh, our families, uh, with, uh, hotspots to help with internet connectivity. And, uh, we've, uh, I think we've given out some, but, but we have, uh, much, many more on order. Uh, and so there just became a need for us to have an agreement so everybody knows acceptable use for hotspot. And, uh, so Rick?
So yeah, we've decided to put an agreement together because we can't control everything that goes through a mobile hotspot. So we can control certain things that the students see through our content filtering in their Chromebooks, but because these are open devices, anybody that's at home could use it and then unfortunately do some things that they're not supposed to do. And we want to make sure that we're covered, uh, in the agreement that they're going to be signing and acknowledging that, you know, these are unprotected, they're not going to be, you know, uh, filtered for everybody at the family, they're, so we just want, uh, so we're just trying to make sure we cover some bases. The thing is, is that our Chromebooks that the students take home, they are on our content filtering system as if they were here or at home. The way they're designed, they're, they go both ways. But if someone else has another device at home and uses our hotspot for something that is not for school-related issues, we just want to make sure that we're protected. So this is where they also, uh, there's a clause in there for damage or not return. There's, I believe it's in there is a hundred dollars if they do not return it or it's damaged, that we, uh, collect a hundred dollars so we can replace it. We just want to make sure that they understand that there, you know, there is a value to it and that they're taking responsibility for what they're taking home, just as we do with an agreement with our, um, Chromebooks that the students will be taking home to use for, um, this process too. We already have a school agreement, those will just carry on for the ones that are going to do the e-learning. So we're just making sure we have both sides balanced.
So I'd recommend your approval.
I'd move approval.
Questions or comments?
I have a question.
I do too.
Is there a way, um, to check the computer to see if, uh, the child, in other words, if there's somebody playing games all night on it and it's not the child, obviously? Doing, using it, that you can send a letter and say, we know you're doing this, uh, whatever it is?
If they're using their Chromebooks, we do monitor that and we can determine if they're doing something like that of games or whatever. But if it's a personal device that's outside of our control, I don't have a way to do that with the current devices that we purchased. So I can't tell, like, if you were using the hotspot for, uh, services and you're, and the child is, I can only see what the child's did.
Okay. I'm not concerned, I guess I shouldn't, I don't know if I should be concerned about him using the hotspot. I'm just more concerned about him using the Chromebook. I don't know if that's right or not, but-
The Chromebooks, we do monitor that. If there's anything that, uh, gets flagged, we're notified. And if there's certain things that pop up, um, we escalate it up to the principals. But, um, again, that's just if it puts over the threshold of the flags that have been set in the system.
Okay.
So, Rick, on a, on a hotspot, just for my technology, how far of a range is that? Does the next-door neighbor have access to the hotspot? Or is it within a 30-foot range? Or I have no idea. Curious.
They're about 25 to 30 feet is the, the maximum. And inside a house, it drops down to about, uh, 15 to 20, just because of the walls and structure. But the maximum that you see outside is about 30. So 20, inside the house is about 20 feet from our radius.
Okay, so is that different than what we did here at the high school? And kids would come up in the spring and sit in their trucks or cars and do their-
Yes, in the spring, we use our existing network, we use our existing access points. And they have a long, they have, uh, more power and longer range than what the mobile hotspots carry.
Okay.
I'm just kind of curious, how many of the hotspots are needed for our students?
We don't have a full count yet. Right now, we're sitting on, uh, we have about 40 in-house right now. Uh, we have only heard maybe three, five right now, but I'm sure as soon as we open this up and let everybody know that we have them, we'll see, uh, a rush for requests. Um, but right now, we can accommodate until we get the next set in. We have about 40 in-house that we can handle.
And the next set is how many?
50. Well, hopefully 50. The prices keep changing every day. It's one of those things that, uh, demand is, is hurting us right now with, uh, the purchase of numbers. So, uh, we'll try to push for everything in the 50 that Dr. Sanders mentioned to the, uh, Community Foundation. And we know that we may have to scale back a couple to make sure that we stay within the dollar range that they allot it.
I did have another question. So if a family chooses not to have internet at home, do you send them the hotspot? Or, in other words, they just don't want to pay for it?
That's where we've been leaving it up to some of the principals to help us make those decisions on who receives them. Um, if it's to encourage them to do their homework and they have this ability, then, you know, we at least can offer to them. But we leave it to the principals to help us make those decisions.
Okay.
So, back to the technology part. If it's, there's certain areas in our district that do not have internet still, and they have those HughesNet or-
Satellites.
Would this hotspot still work in those areas, even if they did not have a HughesNet or cellphone reception?
They will be as, just as good as what your cellphone is in your home today. The good thing is that we're trying to balance between a Verizon hotspot and an AT&amp;T hotspot. So we can try to work with the family. And they tell me that they have Verizon and they get good reception at home, then we'll give them a Verizon hotspot. If they're in an area where AT&amp;T is more prevalent and has stronger signal, we'll give them an AT&amp;T, uh, device. There is some areas that will just, they will not receive signal. Um, and that's just because they're either outside of the range of the towers or the towers are just, you know, uh, too many hills and valleys that are causing the problem to receive the reception. So we're going to do everything we can to give them the tools, but there is limitations out there for everyone in, you know, in the market. So we're, we're going to do everything we can to get them the service. But we do ask the parents, you know, how's your cellphone reception at your home? And then we try to help based on that.
So our principals, our s- school staff, Jill Cronin, who's Family Service Coordinator, they're working with families now, trying to identify those who have that need. And, uh, we're just trying to get the devices, the hotspots as quickly as we can. You know, we didn't have a lot of time to prepare for something like the, this pandemic and, so we, we won't necessarily have the, the teacher laptops, uh, right away and, and, but we're doing our best to try to help our families out as much as possible.
No, I'm glad. I'm glad for that.
Anything further?
Questions?
Mr. Irwin, I really want to appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you, Gil.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Really, a lot of extra work to try to make sure that we can get through this. And, uh, we really appreciate your hard work and effort in doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Our next item is consideration to approve revisions to the reopening school plan. Dr. Sanders?
Yeah, so this is, uh, really, uh, one, a decision that, as we talked about previously, that you, uh, gave me the, the, uh, ability to, ability to make a change based on the situation. And, uh, so, uh, as, if you remember, we, uh, were, uh, we had a plan that, that you approved on July 6th. And, uh, we really wanted to implement that plan because, uh, we do feel that, we feel like, uh, we need to make sure that we have the safest environment for our students. But we also have a, a burden and a responsibility to make sure we're, uh, addressing the, uh, education of our, of our students. And, uh, and so, uh, that's just going to be, uh, something that we're going to have to balance this whole school year. And, uh, and so, uh, based on the, uh, the situation, we decided to go to a, a hybrid situation rather than going to all virtual. But we also understand that there may be a circumstantial scenario this year where we have to move to, to all virtual. And we certainly hope that at some point, we, uh, things improve enough that we can bring everybody back. So we developed this, uh, plan that has different levels. Uh, and currently, we're at level two, the hybrid schedule. And I'm going to speak to, to that, uh, in my superintendent's report. Uh, but based on the situation, and, uh, we will, uh, definitely, uh, obviously the board will be part of that decision if we were to move a different level. Our administrators, uh, and, and all the, the health experts that we, uh, have been communicating with, uh, will factor all that, uh, in to, to moving from one level to another in the best interest of our, uh, safety of our students and our staff. So that's, that's the big change that, that I wanted to be able to get your approval on, uh, which, uh, I, I hope you approve because we started it today.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? I know that we do rely on the experts and, um, we do look at data, we do look at what is happening with our school, not, not just what's happening in the RBB area. And it's very hard- And it's very hard to separate out RBB data from MCCSE data, you know, for the county. But as far as in the general population, we can keep very close tabs on what's happening in our school system.
At the end of the day, my responsibility is for our students and our staff. And believe me, over the last several months, I get all kinds of information from all different opinions. And, but I just do my best, and all of you do too, to sort through all that and just really decide what's best for RBB. And that's what we, that's what we've done and that's what we'll always do. And sometimes people like it, sometimes they don't. But we got to do, we have to do what's right for our students and our staff.
And we all look forward to the day where all the students can be back and...
Yep.
We can get that done. And hopefully, that day will be sooner than later. Any further questions or comments on the reopening plan? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now, we'll get into the superintendent's report.
Yeah, so, today was a great day. It was any first day of the school year. And some of our educators here tonight, Mrs. Whitaker, Mr. Yules, you know, for every educator, the night before the first day of school, and I'm sure for students and parents too, it's an anxious night. You can't get to sleep. You wake up early. But I was especially excited. I couldn't wait to see the kids on campus. In fact, this morning, I just left my office early and went up to the, behind the junior high, and all the buses were pulling in. And I just got on just about every bus. I kind of ran out of time before they started unloading. But I got on and welcomed the bus drivers and welcomed the students to the new school year. And they, the only difference is they were all wearing masks. And I just was very excited to see them. First days are always very busy, first few days, working through the wrinkles of a new school year, trying to sort through, make sure the teachers have all the books that they need, all the materials, that the students find their classrooms, that, you know, you're always working through transportation issues, make sure everybody gets on the right bus. Of course, this year, those wrinkles looked more like mountains to us. But as I walked around and visited each of the schools today, everyone had such positive attitudes. And I could say, at the end of the day, when I talked to some of the teachers, they still had that positive attitude. And so, that's a good thing to note. We never imagined we would be facing the things that we're facing in our careers. But our teachers, they're working extra hard this year. Sometimes I don't know if a teacher could work harder, but they can, they have, because they're not only preparing for the students in their classroom who are physically sitting in front of them, but they're also, at the same time, planning for educational activities and for their students who are at home doing e-learning. I've talked to a fourth-grade teacher at EIS, and she said, she wasn't complaining or anything, but she said she didn't get lunch today because at lunchtime, she was emailing and communicating with all of her students and parents who were at home doing e-learning today. Our principals, you know, usually, our principals, they're focused, so focused on making sure everything's right in their building on that first day. You know, I went up to Mrs. Whitaker's office, and she's not only monitoring pickups and drop-offs of students and parents bringing in medication and getting with teachers and all the normal things, but she's also communicating with the parents who are doing e-learning or doing the virtual school. So, they, the virtual school students, they're as much RBB students as the students who are in the classroom. And the students who, they might, maybe the students who were home today doing e-learning who will be here Thursday and Friday, they're as important as any other student. And so, we have to make sure that we're addressing all of them and providing the highest quality education. And so, as I mentioned in my call last night, the first two weeks, first few weeks maybe of the school year is going to be a little awkward. It was different today, having fifty percent of our students here. It was strange, it was strange seeing the students with masks. But school happened. The students were, teachers took students outside to read today. Got a picture of a teacher taking her students out and reading under a tree. And so, school is happening, and we are going to get better with each day. I am so glad that we went with the hybrid situation in so many ways. One is, the e-learning days that we're going to have now, they're going to be significantly enhanced because the students are coming today to school two days a week, which we didn't have that last spring. You know, they were doing e-learning every day. Well, right now, they're coming to school two days. So, those two days are going to make the three days of e-learning so much better. And our teachers did an awesome job last spring. But the students being able to come to school for those two days, they're going to build relationships with their teachers. That's what happened today. When the Orange Group comes Thursday, they're going to build relationships with those students. And with each coming week, and hopefully, we'll have an end to this eventually, but with each coming week, as the students come in, having done three days of e-learning, then those two days they're in school, they're going to be able to address areas where the students might be unsure about something. They're going to be able to clarify maybe something they didn't understand when they were doing their e-learning. They're going to be able to reconnect and encourage that student and get them inspired that when they go back to doing the e-learning again, that they'll be ready to go. So, it's going to make a completely different situation. And as I mentioned, the masks are, I was worried about that. I'll be honest with you. I woke up this morning thinking, I wish I would have mentioned in my all-call that for students to have their masks ready when they got on the bus this morning. So, I was just worried about everybody forgetting. I didn't have to worry about that. Every one of them had masks on. And even the little first graders walking to school, it was no big deal. And I complimented some of them on their style, the color, that some of them had Spider-Man or Colts or pretty flowers. One teacher just said it was, sometimes in the classroom, when they took their masks off and the students thought, "Oh, I need to go sharpen my pencil," or "I need to go do this or that," they might have forgotten to put their mask back on. Those things are going to happen. I drove across town the other day and forgot my mask at home. So, we're going to forget those masks, but with every day, we're going to find our groove and we're going to get better at e-learning, we're going to get better at virtual school, and we're going to make this really the very best that we can moving forward. And in the meantime, we're going to hope and pray that this all gets better. So, you know, all that we're doing, the safety measures that we've implemented, the hybrid schedule, all that, and I appreciated the comments tonight, because all that is to get to what we really want and we really believe is most important. And that's to get the kids back in school five days a week. That's what we want to get to as quickly as possible, because that's really what's best. And we're going through all these things that nobody really wants to do in order to get to our goal more efficiently and as safely as possible. So, that's my report tonight. I just wanted to give a report on today, and it went pretty well. We get to do it again tomorrow.
Wonderful. Our next item is RBB EA comments. Mr. Yules.
Hey, good evening. Missed you last month. Sorry about that. Started my new school year, I don't have Larry Demoss to commiserate with or to make jokes with, so, that's too bad. Just want to echo some of the things you said and a couple of comments for you that you need to know. Appreciate the new laptops, those come around. Well, I'm sure the teachers will. Believe me, I hear that sometimes. I'm sure the principals hear it, you know, when the laptops are just on their, you know, last breath. So, appreciate the focus on that because, geez, we're so dependent on technology anymore, is what it is. So, also appreciate Rick's efforts. I've heard nothing but good things about Rick Rowland since he started. So, just want to throw that out there publicly. Echoing a few things Dr. Sanders said, yeah, we started school today. That was nice. It was good to see kids. I'm a high school math teacher, for some of you don't know. It was a pretty, it was a pretty smooth day from my little viewpoint, but, you know, I'm only one set of eyes. There were a lot of nerves leading up to this. There was no doubt about it. The waiting's the worst part and the unknown and all the changes. So, it was just good to get started, to see what it was like. It was pretty good. So, there are two things I wanted to tell you about that. You know, this job has an emotional toll sometimes, you know, because we're teaching kids, we're invested, and sometimes we feel guilty about things, you know, maybe not wanting to go back to worry about health concerns and all this. And so, last week, I sent out an email to members that just said, "Help each other out. Help each other out, we're all in this together," because it is an unknown thing. And I also wanted to point out, just so you know, I said, "Make sure you understand the admin have been on this since day one." All the administrators, you know, countless hours, more hours than I even know. You know, I obviously communicate with Dirk more than the others, but I know they've been here a bunch, through a lot of changes, and you have to keep making plans and changing them. So, I wanted to let them know that, so that, you know, you guys had to make this thing happen. So, it was on you guys. I'm sure you felt a lot of pressure. So, I wanted to let them know that you guys have put in a lot of hours, and we appreciate it without a doubt. There's every schedule possible in our own county. There's everybody out, everybody in, and we're the hybrid, you know, we're going to see what works. I will say, as a teacher, just to be blunt, I think we have the hardest schedule, there's no doubt. And that's not a complaint, it's just an observation, because some of my MCC buddies are like, "How are you going to do that?" We don't know. We're going to figure it out, though. And so, we appreciate the extra time, the little bit of delay, once we decided to go to this, because we needed it. And we have an amazing tech crew. I'm sure you hear that, and I'm not just brown-nosing them. They're pretty on it, and they're very helpful. And we just need to help each other out, so we appreciate that. But given that, just remember, be patient with us. Because just as Dr. Sanders said, it's kind of what we've said, we need about two weeks, and we're going to have this down a lot better. We are figuring those things out, trying to smooth out the bumps. We get a weekend or a belt, and then we figure out next week with this hybrid schedule. It will have some traction, because I do think, you know, it's been one of our, to me, one of our pluses is we're not so big or in-person. We have a lot of good teachers that help each other out, and that's what we need. And we have a lot of young, tech-savvy people to help us less tech-savvy people out, and they're willing to help, and it's been a huge bonus. And we are, we're just going to jump in there and figure it out and get the cycle going. So, here we go. That's about all I got to say. So, it was a good first day, and we'll see if we can get through this. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Yules.
Thank you, Doug.
We'll come to board member comments. You ever remember where I do tonight in time before? I'll start with Mrs. Mary.
I just want to say, welcome back to our teach, our staff and our students. And everyone, please do what you need to do to stay safe. And also, thank you to our awesome donors. We got some great donations again this month and really does help the corporation out a lot.
Mr. Cronin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I missed my first field day opening in several years now today. I did listen afar, and I contacted Jerry a couple of times, and things are going well. Just thank you to all the principals, your leadership. Brenda, thank you so much for what you do for us. And, you know, it sounded like you had some normal bus issues on the first day, but everything went well. But I'm real proud of this system, and I hope to continue, hope we continue with those good thoughts. So, thank you.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yeah, I want to say thank you for the donations. We always love seeing the donations. Our corporation really needs them to move in the direction that we want to move for our students, so we appreciate that so much. I also want to say thank you to the visitors that spoke to us today. We do hear your concerns, and we understand where you are. And I've made this comment in the last several months. I'm a parent of students here, and so, I understand where you are. We are trying to do the best we can with what we have in this situation. And I think it went really well today. I took my kids to school this morning, and as I was coming around to the junior high, Dr. Sanders was there, and Devon says, "Look, Mom, it's Dr. Sanders, he's out there with us." And he was, he was so proud of you for being there. He thought that was just really, really neat. And, you know, from both of my kids, from the high school and junior high level, both of them said, "No big deal, Mom. It went just fine." And I think that that is really the attitude of our kids, is no big deal. We've got this, and we're just going to keep going. And we had a great day, and you know what? We got to go outside, and we got to have breaks, and we got to breathe some air. And so, I think from my kid's standpoint, they had a great day today, their first day. So, I appreciate, again, administration and Dr. Sanders, everything that you're doing for our students, and a lot of them are very happy today. So, I commend you all.
That's awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Tucker?
I want to just echo what Deborah Angela said. Thank you, thank you to the administration, teachers, bus drivers, got to get them here today. I know that was an interesting thing as well, so thank you to all those. And the custodians who are really working hard behind the scenes to clean the facility every day and throughout the day. Thanks to the parents that showed up this evening, and appreciate your comments. And I was, I listened to this very well, and I really hope you understand that a lot of that is taken into consideration. And I hear Dr. Sanders call and ask questions, and there's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that, there's a lot of worry that she's trying to do the right thing for all that are concerned. Mr. Yules mentioned, he missed talking to Mr. Demoss today, and I'll have to, this is kind of a comic of a day. I just, I just drove around this morning about nine-thirty, I saw Dr. Sanders and Mr. Irwin out driving, and I saw the happiest guy in the world walking two dogs. Yeah, Mr. Demoss walking two dogs on the sidewalk, so he's pretty happy being retired today, I think. But, again, please be patient with everybody, be cooperative. We're all in this together, and we will, we will get through this at some point.
Thank you. I, probably a little housekeeping thing, I should have abstained from one appointment for Elizabeth Kerr to latchkey. She is my daughter, and so, you're supposed to do public disclosures, and so, but that otherwise would have been passed without my vote anyway. But, so, just that. Also, I had heard a question about the food truck, and so, I assume this is on our website?
Yes.
The food truck is running during this hybrid time, and so, you can look onto the website and see where that is as well. So, I do want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I do appreciate the comments. It is difficult, and I just do hope and pray that this goes away sooner than later, and we can, we can bring all the students back. The thing I like about the hybrid model, Dr. Sanders said it much better than I'm going to, but, is having the kids at least at school part of the week makes, as I said, the other three days such more meaningful. I know, especially, I think for the, the younger the kids, the more important it is for them to be in the classrooms as much as they can be. And so, also, I have seen so many teachers and heard of so many teachers and administrators and staff, you know, our technology, our business managers, our, you know, everyone working so hard and putting in such very long hours to try to make this all work. And we just appreciate all the efforts of every one of them. We appreciate all the efforts of the parents trying to, you know, deal with these times and making it work. And so, we appreciate you, and of course, we appreciate those little ones. And so we, we appreciate you and of course, we appreciate those little ones, our students, coming here and hopefully, they'll be able to come each and every day sooner than later. So with that, we appreciate all of you.
Mr. Kerr? I'm sorry, I have one more thing.
Okay.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no.
I did want to talk about, real quick, our, Vicky Coffey, our Director of Nutrition Services, she's also one of those heroes we have working in the corporation. And we will be providing food on Wednesdays. So our, we'll have a drive-by pickup on Wednesdays. For our students who are on a hybrid schedule, we'll get three days, three days of meals. And our students who are on virtual school will get five days of meals. And that's on Wednesdays. And then our food truck goes out every day to the different neighborhoods. And I got so wrapped up and excited about talking about our first day of school, I forgot to mention that, so I apologize.
Glad you did. It's a need that we, that RBB is fulfilling every day, so we appreciate that. With that, you all have a wonderful evening and this meeting is adjourned.